All right, let's call this meeting to order. If you would mind, Nicole, the roll call, and I did make a list for you, so it's a little bit easier.
Yeah.
All right. Albertine?
Bonnie?
Here.
Dahlia?
Present.
Joanne?
Here.
Christina?
Here.
Nicole, all right. Shaun? Charlene? Veronica? And Fay? All right.
Actually, we don't know if Shaun, I guess, is continuing.
Well, I've been hearing news. All right, our first order of business, as you see on our agenda, is we're going to be electing officers for 2020. So luckily, we just have a quorum. And so, I believe, Joanne, do you have a slate to present?
I do, I do. And I will explain before I read the slate that, of course, this is open to nominations off the floor, off the floor till after I read the whole slate. For president, we have Benita, sometimes known as Bonnie Schaff. And for vice president, Dahlia Zagass. Secretary, Nicole Coleman. And Charlene Lindsay will continue as treasurer.
Do we have any other nominations from the floor? Christina? All right. So I will entertain a movement to let the slate of officers. If someone moves, I'll move.
I'll second it. I think I can do that, each of them.
Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, well, congratulations, Bonnie.
Congratulations, John.
To all of you, yes.
Thank you.
We're delighted.
All right, good. So now, we'll let you take over the meeting.
Okay. Well, she was learning.
We were plotting as she walked in.
Sorry to be late. We're gonna snap all about the minutes, so we're just gonna have to... Yeah, so I've forgotten, because, we don't have the minutes for the 19th meeting. There was a little bit of a mix-up, since we've had another planning meeting in between, whatever. We will bring the minutes for next time for both meetings. So we do not have minutes for today. Just okay to you. Oh, treasurer report, I have some information on that, too, sorry. As we pass over the reins here. So yeah, Charlene cannot make it today. So, again, she's working with the city to try to reconcile a few things from last year, just to double-check if everything's okay. And I'm sure she'll give us a report next time. So, no, I think I won't. Okay, anything else about that? Okay.
Excuse me, I was just gonna say Janet is here visiting, and I don't know if you wanted to leave early. Is it gonna be introduced now?
Whatever you guys want.
No, I'm talking to... I'm talking to the secretary of the...
Oh, Janet!
Now I wanna double-J Janet here.
I was going to say, if that's okay.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah, I tried to go... We're trying to get ourselves involved in some of the commissions, just to...
And we're pleased to have...
...contact for the mayor, and this seems like a natural one for me to do.
Do you want to know each other? That's Janet is Janet.
I do know Janet. Sorry, it was like, just not bringing it about.
I should've welcomed it differently.
Welcome our guests to today.
Do you wanna wait until we're... Do you wanna give your report right now about the exhibit, or do you wanna wait for a while? We're going to talk about our other...
However you feel it flows with your meeting best is fine with me. So if you'd like it now, I could do it.
Yeah, we could.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
It'll be good.
Well, really, I came to actually more invite... The exhibit's going great. We're compiling all the work, and pretty much have all the work that we want to fill it. But some of the things that I just wanted to invite you guys personally to are some workshops that we're having during the exhibit. So, we have a woman who... We have an installation in the Susan Blot Gallery of a woman who is kind of well-known in Chicago and in the region, having shows and various venues, solo shows in various venues at the DePaul Art Museum in Minnesota. She does portraits of women screaming. And she does something called a scream session. And so, we can only take 20 people. So, we are... They are personalized invitations to the commission, because we wanna ensure diversity of the people who participate. So, I have Dahlia's. And then there... So anyhow, if you do wanna participate, there's a release form, and you need to let me know. It's limited to 20, and your photograph will be... Of you will be used in the exhibit at Ludezny Center, if you permit it. So, I thought you guys might like that. And there's one for Bonnie. Joanne. And I have ones for everybody else who's not here, but let's see. Nicole. Christina! You are right here. So... They're really not transferable, but if you can't make... Because we wanna invite some of our other donors as well. But I mean, if you can't do it, or you decide you don't wanna do it, and you do, like, wanna ask your sister or something, that would be okay. But I need to know. And I have ones for everybody else. And the other activity that we're going to have, by the way, these are all free of charge to the people that participate. We're also having a craftivist stitch-up. And so, one of the artists also in the show is Shannon Downey, who's also really well-known. She was just... She got a lot of press, because she did a quilt this... She found a quilt in an estate sale that wasn't finished. And what ended up happening was she put it on Instagram, and women from all 50 states contributed to this. It was of the entire United States, and they all did their own piece. So, she's gonna make something specific to the show, but she holds these craftivist stitch-up workshops, where all the materials will be free, because we're using some of the money you gave us to help with that. That will be limited to 20 people as well. And what she does is she has embroidery hoops, and she does a... She helps you tell your story, and then you stitch. She teaches you very quickly how to embroider, and you... There's extra ones of those that you guys can see. And it will be free, but you will have to register. It will be first come, first served.
What day is that?
It's in the back of yours as well. It is in July, at the height of the exhibition, July 9. And so, we just wanted to let you know that, like, there were really interesting, fun things happening in addition to the show itself. If you have specific questions, again, the opening for the show will be, I think it's Friday, July 3. And the show is a very long show, it's like 19 weeks. So, it'll be up through the summer, through the festival. It opens a few weeks prior to the actual reception. And we're very grateful, because the shipping and things are definitely mounting costs. Right now, you're already... We're just about to print the donor wall for the coming first Friday, which you guys will be on, you'll be on the card and all that. You know, we hope to be able to fund some WBEZ ads, so we talked about that. Anything else you guys wanna know about it?
Do you want to put some of this stuff in the gallery?
This would be great. This is a community focus group. As many of you know, the Black History Branch is hosted at our Ludezny Center on Saturday. And we did hold a... You were there. We held a focus group on February 10, and we let the community know. We tried to find out, kept a conversation about how we can best serve the community. So, I was gonna... I'd love you to take some, Esther, but I'd love everybody to pass those around. And we're tattered, Miss, having to come back, but that's not really business. Since you're being filmed, I don't wanna take a pic. But I hope you can join us for that. So, anything you guys have questions about over there?
I did notice that the scream workshop is on March 21, and we have an event that day at the library.
Oh, okay.
That afternoon, we're co-sponsoring, so we're gonna be there. We have a speaker. Excuse me, while I hold a book or whatever, I may not be able to make it yet.
Is it? Yeah, well, let me know if you can think of somebody right now. Like, we asked a couple... We asked our team pals. Is it... And so, at 4 o'clock, it's like, your event?
Actually, ours will be over by about 3, I hope.
Well, this starts at 4.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we'll just have a very full day.
Well, so then you can go scream at the meeting. You can walk there, it's not that far. Yeah, yeah, if you don't... I didn't move my car. I needed to walk, so... So, yeah, that's... That would be great, and I know.
Yeah, so glad you have a sister.
Okay, well, if you feel like screaming, then we might. If you're not all ready.
We have a lot of work.
I'm just so ready.
Looking forward to the exhibit.
Oh, I think that the exhibit is gonna be really... I'm very excited. We've really taken our time to get some very cool things. And I hope, like I said, you know, we do have the 17th century engravings, and we have the, you know, a lot of really great contemporary work. I think that you'll be happy. But it'll definitely be conversation, at the very least. So, yeah, if there's anything you guys need, or I just wanted to make sure that you were invited, and please do RSVP to me. And I think, I think things are... You know, they're all on track, so.
Thanks.
Hi, Janet. Good to see you guys, thanks.
Okay. Moving on, I think now we'll jump to Women's History Month and International Women's Day, since those are both together, and Dahlia and Esther. I believe you can...
Yeah, Esther. Joanne, if you have a...
Well, fine, and then, yes, we'll talk about that, and then... So financially, you know, after she's done talking about it, I think we need to approve at least a tentative budget, you know, in advance here, because just so that we know. We applied for a grant, but if we don't get that grant, we kinda need to have a question from our, you know, our commission. So anyway, I'll let Esther talk about it.
Right, and it's all, like, on it, it's preliminary, and open to complete discussion and change at any point. Some of the talent has been booked on the March 22... Well, actually, let me go back to March 15. She has expressed extreme interest. She has not... She has not said definitely, definitely, yet. But I'm pretty sure she will. And she's known in Chicago for doing protest songs and sing-alongs, so, as you had mentioned, it'd be kind of fun to do sing-alongs. And she's really excited about it. She said this is just right what she loves to do. March 22 is Laura Scruggs. She's a storyteller, so she has assembled this grouping of different artists, another storyteller, a poet, and she's waiting for final approval, hopefully today, for the musician. March 29, Dan is assembling films, and we know that it's gonna be fabulous if he's doing it. So, I haven't talked to him about it yet, but, you know, I know. I know his work, and boy, oh, boy, we're in for a treat. And then, this is what I would love to talk to you about, about what you think you would like for the food. Some of it, like movie night, it's pretty easy. It's popcorn and... Or I guess, let me backtrack. Where refreshments, I did what, all four? This would be the total for all four events would be $184, which breaks down to $46 per event, and that includes what's included in that. I thought... I have these big urns that hold gallons and gallons, so I thought we'd do a few sparkling waters and different juices with... I'll put some herbs in it, and just kind of make some nice, refreshing drinks, hopefully. And then, we always have the coffee and tea and hot chocolate. And if you think fresh fruit's a good idea, I'd put fresh fruit in that budget as well. And then, the cookies, I price them out just at Costco, because it seems like everybody loves those cookies. But they can be from higher, too, I suppose. And they're normally $16 for a very large tray of them, so... Now, for our first event, which is the official International Women's Day on March 8, we talked about having a little fuller table. And last year, we did samosas and falafel. And the samosas were a complete hit, so I put them on again. But we can not do that, if you would like, and just do kind of charcuterie, maybe skewers, that we assemble ourselves. I would also like to, you know, a lot of our... A lot of... Or at least, a lot of people who come to the gallery are gluten-free, so I would love to have some gluten-free options at each of these events as well. Which is why, like, even with the bagels and cream cheese, I split that up into some... Because some people like the goat cheeses, and then gluten-free bread and crackers to go along with that.
How many people were you planning for each day?
You know, I... You know, that's... There's where the tricky part is, and that's where we're probably not going to have to spend as much money, you know? And we might not need four trays of cookies, because we, you know... I was thinking, every week, I would determine. I wouldn't buy all four trays at once. We'd buy one tray, and then if I need to go back to Costco, because I'm in that area, because I do that radio show every Friday, so I'm in Valpo. So, it's no problem to head over to Costco to get as we need. So, this wouldn't be, like, purchased all at once, we would. You know, because four weeks, you know, it's a pretty... It's a pretty quick amount of time.
Can you guys just remind me what is the March 8 event?
Yes, that's going to be... And that's not... That's... I didn't put it on that, I see.
Is it on the tributes?
No.
All right.
That's kind of... Bonnie can talk to that one a bit. That was the tributes on the women of... Like, the prominent women of the suffrage movement? Is that what you were thinking of? And then, we were going to have activities, like some of the games that we had at the last one. Vida, she came up with that really great totem game. Dahlia purchased a lot of different games, too. So, we have activities, and we... I'm going to look for, like, a CD on suffrage songs, so that could just be playing ambiently in the background as we...
And what are the times? What is the time of that event?
Yes, I think... No, it's an afternoon, Sunday afternoons, maybe from 2 to 4.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and performing. Now I know what day that is. And then, I should have a women's art exhibit as well, to go along with the month of events. I'm just waiting for the final piece to go in. I need some false movable walls that I'm hoping to borrow or rent. But I have a lot of the artists lined up already on hold, saying, you know, depends on these walls.
Was there a charge for the venue?
I, you know, can we just keep that sort of, you know... That's probably not very much, okay? Just, yeah, I know. I just couldn't think beyond what I did. So, you know, I'll email, and you can email it out, if, you know, but it will be nominal. And then, I remembered all the paper goods at the back, which is at the second page, so the paper goods are at the bottom, and again, just guestimates. And then, I also did just a preliminary... A preliminary search for the sashes and the buttons. So, I found on Amazon 24 sashes for $15.99, or another company has 16 pieces for $11.99. So, and it's like, next day... I have Prime, so it's next-day delivery practically. So, those, I thought, were pretty good prices on the sashes. I mean, I haven't... I didn't have time to read all the reviews on... But they all seem to have, like, almost the five reviews, five stars from all the people that mentioned.
And then, we would decorate those?
And then, we would decorate them. That would be part of the March 8.
Oh.
And maybe whatever's left over for the following ones as well, because for the protest songs, it would be really good, too, to have the sashes. And we were hoping in our press to put out, it would be great if we could get people to dress in either purple, gold, or white. For this, too, just to get in the spirit of... It'd also be fun if people had vintage outfits to wear.
It would be wonderful.
I do, I don't know that I could...
I'd also like to check those sashes with that local business that we have.
We will check them. This was just so that I...
At the outlet mode, it's a new little business started up. It's a really small family business with the T-shirts. I sent you something, I think. So, I'd like to check with them. He was very interested in making sashes for us.
We would love to do that.
We could maybe print our suffragette on there, or something like that. Like, we could just wear it multiple times, parades, or whatever, like, all year.
The back, yeah.
And maybe even sell.
Michigan City Commission for Women on it. And then, again, just a speedy check on the button costs. And you can see those there, various sizes. I kind of focused on the three-inch button, because I thought that would be really nice at that sass juncture, where it comes together to have Naomi Bowman, you know, on that sash.
We're talking about the sashes?
Yes. And the buttons seemed extremely reasonable, and so, we will check with the local business first.
For the... On March 8, International Women's Day, for the tributes to women, I don't think we had discussed what it would be, but do we just invite everyone to come prepared to make a tribute? Or would that just be the commissioners, or the commissioners that wanna do that? Or what are you... And do you want to limit it to suffragists or women's rights? Women who... Rather than, like, our mothers, or something, which sometimes we've done.
I think it'd be hard, in the sense of, a lot of people don't know who all the suffragists are, but then there's women who, in history... I mean, maybe we do tributes to women in history that have made impact, because I feel like there's lots of...
Current women making impact, too. Everyone could read.
Current women making impact.
Books, or something.
I think it might be a good time to learn about the suffrage, of course.
I tell you, I have been immersed in it, and they feel like friends now.
Absolutely.
I've been reading about them for, like, months now.
So impressive.
Then, there definitely should be someone that knows to do a good tribute on a number of them. That would be good. But I think most people won't know.
Yeah, but this would be a good time to learn. You know, just pick one.
Well, that would be a good idea. Maybe we can...
There are hundreds to choose from.
Ask the newspapers to maybe do weekly... Maybe we turn in weekly sort of synopses of some of these women to get the community used to who these women are, because, oh my gosh, Indiana is pretty fabulous in the suffrage nationally. Very well-thought-of in the whole suffrage movement. It was really surprising, I mean, as I delve deep into it, boy...
It's amazing, isn't it?
And then, there's like a whole... Whole another faction of the radical Hoosier suffragists as well. And so, some of the other suffragists thought, oh, you know, we don't wanna be with them, but they still are. We're working for the same cause, some of them just more radically than others.
Well, I will give a tribute to a woman named Naomi Anderson, and I think I'll talk about her right now, because you can't stop me from talking about her, for one thing, every chance I get.
Well, that will be maybe your chance to really let people get to know.
Yeah. And I've done a lot of research.
Are you there for that Women's Commission meeting?
Yes, I am.
I'm a little late, I'm sorry.
I am, Veronica.
I'm proud of you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
You can sit at the table if you wish, we have an agenda right here.
Absolutely.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good seeing you.
Yeah, maybe that was your chance to really talk about.
Look, come and join us. We started...
We started during the talk, right? One of the early ones.
Okay. So, it's not 5:30? No. I made that mistake.
My grandparent was thinking it's 5:30.
Well, we've changed. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to tell you a little bit about a suffragist that I learned about just in the past month. I've been reading a lot about women, you know, and women's rights and suffragists in this country. And my sister got a jigsaw puzzle for Christmas of 50 suffragists. And we did the puzzle, and there was one we didn't know. We didn't recognize her name. And I looked her up on Wikipedia, and the first line says she is... She was born in Michigan City, Indiana. Her name is Naomi Anderson, Naomi Bowman Talbert Anderson. She was born here in 1843, to a middle-class, free, black family. And she went on... She was an excellent writer, fantastic writer and speaker. And in fact, when she was only 26 years old, she... I haven't found anything yet, examples of what she was writing before that. But when she was 26 years old, she was invited to speak at the First Women's Convention that was held in Chicago. And she gave such a fiery and controversial speech that all of the newspapers in the country, major newspapers, covered it. And then, she started writing editorials and letters to the editor to all of these papers. And from then on, she was published in papers, you know, for the rest of her life. She was a public figure because of that. And... But the thing about her being published was very few women were published in newspapers at all in the 19th century, and especially women of color. So, this was phenomenal, what she did. And she fought a lot in... Well, she was involved in temperance and prohibition of liquor, and then also very, very active in civil rights and rights for former slaves and African-Americans. That was really what she was focused on. So, but she was just very... I found... I have already read more than 100 newspaper articles about her. And there are... I'm not even halfway through. So, there's a lot, a lot to know and a lot to admire in her. So, I'll be giving a tribute to her on March 8. And she was also a poet. And we have two... We've found two poems of hers so far. But that's going to... That's why we have decided to change our poster and essay contests to a poetry contest. And instead, Fay Moore thought that kids love to write poetry now for rap songs. So, since Naomi was a poet, this, you know, might be a good tribute to her, too. So, I'll be talking more about her and the things that she did. She was the head of the suffragist movement in California for six months, and she was on a lecture tour with Susan B. Anthony. And she was just... I mean, she was really a very powerful, important person in it. And so, I don't know how... We had never heard that she's from Michigan City, but anyway. Anyway, it was fun to... And she has... She gave Michigan City credit for her education later in life. She mentioned Michigan City a few times, so... So, I would like to try to find some of her writings before 1869, which was when the... Which is when she spoke in Chicago, so... But I'll let you know. So, that's what I'm... So, that's who I'm giving a tribute to.
Absolutely.
Well, maybe let's focus on that for the whole night? I mean, that might be the theme of the evening, or the afternoon, like, just a tribute to our suffragists, Naomi Anderson. I don't know, what do you think?
Well, I'm very biased, because the suffragists are the ones who found the League of Women Voters, of course. And so, and Michigan City, and the fact that Michigan City League came in a year after, you know, as though we'll be 100 years old next year. And so, this woman is extraordinarily important to us. Absolutely, extraordinarily important, and needs to be honored appropriately.
Yeah, and we could... I'm hoping that in the coming month or two, we'll figure out other ways that we can honor her, too. But I think having a poetry contest for students in the city, you know, that'll make her... That'll get her name out there. But I think having a poetry contest for students in the city, you know, that'll make her, that'll get her name out there. And we'll have to, you know, write something up to accompany the announcement about the poetry contest. But, but I think there's a lot that we can do to honor her and spread the word about her. So that's what I'm going to do. But truly, there are so many important women in suffrage. And Frederick Douglass, he was the absolute most important man, one of the only men in suffrage. And he was huge because he was the only one, he had a newspaper, and he was the only one who would publish anything that Susan B. Anthony wrote. So he was very important in it. But, and I think actually, I think there's enough to, you know, enough to go around. You might want to do Carrie Chapman Cack, because she was the, she founded the League of Women Voters, so, you know.
Several suffragists?
Yeah, there were, yeah, there were.
Several, there's just, like, there's a really, there's a lot of prominent ones in Indiana, but really like about eight to 10 really, really prominent Indiana suffragists.
We could do that, yeah, yeah, yeah. How about any of the commissioners that want to make tributes to an Indiana suffrage, suffragist then? Do you want to do it that way? Or what do you want to do?
Are you thinking of individuals taken?
I mean, I think it's a great idea, and I apologize, I'm performing out of town. It will also be out of town.
Oh, you will?
Oh. Sorry, I knew that in the beginning. I can't make it to March 8th. It's all right.
Oh.
I'll keep rolling.
I do remember.
Yeah, okay.
Be back on. Well, you know what seems interesting? Can we activate the Facebook page with like, I don't know, Weekly Women?
Yes, we can, if you would like to do that. Are you an administrator?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
I think you're the only administrator.
I don't think so, but yes, Christina, that could happen.
Okay, I'm happy to help make that happen. Here's a, do you want a few of the names of the ones that are really prominent? Amanda Way, she was one of the radical Hoosier suffragists.
Like Way as in?
W A Y. There was Mary Stuart Edwards. And Mary A. McCurdy, M C C U R D Y. Lillian J. B. Thomas Fox. Clara Burnside. And Mae Wright, W R I G H T Sewell, S E W A L L. And then there's-
What was her first name? I'm sorry.
Mae, M A Y. And then I found the names of 76 extremely active Hoosier suffragists, and I can email.
Email all that. I mean, I wrote it down, but yeah.
76 in addition to what you just mentioned.
Yeah.
Wow, that's amazing.
And there were a couple men in there too. One with the governor at the time. He was very much pro, pro-women, and a couple newspapers too that were very pro. So I'll send that along. Just had a, I mean, I don't know what I'm saying. But I just saw the Little Women, which was like 1866, 69. Do you think that's the same time that she was giving the speech in Chicago? That's very, I don't know, trying to make a connection with time.
Yeah, that movie is going to be very popular this year, no doubt about it.
Mary Poppins, to a number of reasons.
Yes, Mary Poppins, right.
Okay, well then, at our February meeting, if you want to give a tribute that day, maybe we can just make all the final plans that are meeting next month then, because that's still a few weeks before March 8th. Okay, anything else about that?
Yes, so let's, let's talk about money because, you know.
So hopefully, the grant will cover all of the entertainment part portion.
Did the grant get a grant?
What grant? No, Main Street.
In a couple weeks from now.
A block grant? Is it party?
It's, I applied for a block party grant.
Party grant from Main Street.
We did get it last year.
I'm not sure if that works in our favor, but-
I know, I don't know either. Can't say.
Yeah. So.
Well, it's hard to get, there's no total. There is a total.
Is there a total somewhere?
At the very, see, at the very, approximate total for refreshments, $394.
Okay.
And then I split it up individually into what?
All right.
Now for the swaggy stuff, no, I don't know where you want to go with that.
But we probably should set some kind of approximate budget for this, so that whoever is, you know, purchasing these things will know they will get reimbursed. Do you know what I'm saying? So that we could do that and-
The $394 covers the refreshments for all four events and then every event? Except I forgot to add the paper goods, which maybe will come to around $31.
So I will say like 400.
I was going to round to 500.
Yeah.
I was going to say.
Round to 500 for any of these buttons. And then, you know, we do need to pay for the space, so I'm sorry, like, besides she's setting it all up and cleaning up and everything afterwards. So, I mean, I don't know, we do need to put that into our budget as well. Plus, I think we should maybe two motions, like one to cover refreshments and maybe the space. And the second one, just in case the Main Street does not go through, you know, contingency, that we have the permission to hire these, you know, musicians and storytellers. Because if that doesn't come through, I don't know, it's going to be kind of, we're planning on having us people come.
So tentatively, are we saying that we're going to set aside 1,500 in case?
Well, or do we do two separate ones, like, like this is our budget, and then this is a second one in case the Main Street grant doesn't come?
I think two.
So let's do a thousand dollars, like, for the main, in case the Main Street grant does not come through, so that we're still covered with the entertainment, and then-
But someone wants motion 500 first. I mean, I-
Let's talk about the second one.
A little bit more, because if we're doing these buttons or sashes, is that not included in that budget?
No.
Ronnie, what, do we talk about other kinds of, do we talk about other things? Because weren't the buttons also, we were going to get extra so that we could sell them?
So that we could sell them.
So that you can sell the buttons. That's why I did the several, because I don't know if you want all big ones, do you want big ones and small ones, or?
Oh, we don't have to decide that now, but let's decide kind of approximate budget, do you think?
Yes, yeah. I mean, should we do that, do the buttons and all of those things? When we talk about the budget for all the ones that you also want to purchase for the other events that we're hosting? So therefore, it's like one big order?
Yeah, actually, that, that would cover that. I mean, I was hoping that there would be enough, you know, left from something like that for the event that we're doing at the library on March 21st. We have a speaker, and I was hoping we could hand out things or, or sell buttons or something. The library thought we were going to hand out things, that that would be our, our part of the hosting, because the League of Women Voters is going to furnish.
I see what, I saw, I saw with refreshments. She does have some costs for buttons, so we can kind of keep that in mind, but-
Yeah, they would be a good giveaway, yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to, you know, give them away at our events and then possibly sell them later or whatever, so that, that would be good, so.
So, Veronica. The gallery could be the Naomi Bowman outlet for.
I'd like where people can make their own buttons at like one of the events.
You know, I used to, a long time ago, have a button-making machine. I don't anymore, but I will look into it.
It's not as fun. You just have to, no, really, I've done it. It's just like you have to pound something and then it's done, so I don't know. Not sure it's really fun.
I know we were going to decorate the sashes, so we can have-
We have some artsy things happening, but not like the buttons necessarily. Okay, so back to the buttons. So let's have two movements, one for the-
I think we should have three, one for the, you know, for the merchandising.
Okay.
And that, separate from the food too.
All right.
Yes, because the food, the food is going to, you know, depending on market prices. And also, I would love your opinion on what you want to do about that, the March 8th one. Do you want the samosas again? I know, so they were all eaten.
They came out very nice, and they're fingerful, they're not very messy.
I like falafel too, though, what you're thinking, yeah. No, she mentioned it.
Yeah, we had falafel last, last time. And I, I-
Yeah, that's why I mentioned it.
I would comment off camera. Sorry, didn't go so well.
Samosas are fantastic and lovely treats. And maybe some other little thing. Well, okay, so we need to give some cushion here, because if we start seeing that 200 people show up every time, we're going to have to up, you know, everything, kind of.
I think the March 8th is going to be really well attended. I, I think also probably the, um, the 22nd will be really well attended. The movies, just historically, Dan's movies are very well attended. So I think we're going to have four events that are very, you know, a lot of people won't know the person on the 15th, but they just have to know that we're doing protest songs and a sing-along, and I think it's going to also work out well.
And you know, it always amazes me how many people we can get in the nest, but what is the capacity?
Capacity is 100, but the fire marshal said if I went a little over, he wouldn't, you know, 100 and 100 plus maybe four. So let's say, so 100, 100 is my capacity. The other thing that I'm not seeing here is marketing costs. Are we covering?
I was just going to say that we should get at least posters. And of course, since you're going to take over our Facebook, it's going to be fabulous from that end. Uh, yeah, so I think we need little posters, even if they're, you know, 8x11.
Just 150, but for like 500.
Postcards, yes, we'll pass them out.
Make it everywhere.
What do you think?
I like that.
Postcards instead of the flyers, or just maybe just copy the flyers, just, you know, print them off with the postcards at the Beecher. What is, that we got?
Uh, no, Vista Print online.
Those are great.
Yeah, Vista Print has some good prices.
And so you said 150 for 500?
So many.
150, it's a lot.
500 is a bit much for us.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you can go lower.
Yeah.
That was just given you.
That's the last time I ordered.
And you just said, they're designed, yeah.
But flyers work too, if it's a lot less expensive, I think.
Yeah, flyer, whatever.
I think that-
I'm just saying it's not in the budget here.
So what would you say, like around 800 for refreshments and marketing materials? And then, you know, some of it has to go to your, your gallery space. I just feel, you know, that's something, I mean, I don't know, what do you guys think, 800?
Including marketing, did you say?
Yeah, marketing, refreshments, and overflow, whatever, of whatever is not covered by the Main Street grant.
Yeah, it seems reasonable.
Now, is this about receipts, though? So if it goes under, or how is that? Is this a final number?
This is like no more than, I think, 800, and then to turn the receipts and to get reimbursed. That's how it usually works here, right, what I understand?
I don't know. I've never dealt with the pressure.
You just buy it, and then you have to turn in your receipts to get reimbursed. Because this is our event, this is not a grant.
Correct. Yeah. Well, with the, the Main Street grant is also a reimbursable grant only. And so all the, all the entertainers will need to be paid by check, not cash. So that we have the receipt for that as well.
And in case you're not aware of our finances, we have, we've given away over $30,000 in grants over the last four years. And we have, our account right now is around 22,000, I believe. So we can, you know, we've been funding a lot of programs, arts programs, sports, a lot of things that women and girls are involved in. And a lot of educational programs too. So this is something that, you know, we would be funding ourselves for a change if we, you know, if the grant doesn't come through from Main Street, or if we have to pay, you know, or if that doesn't cover everything. I think we can probably say that we can afford it if it's going to get this much, not only this much, um, get our name out there, but also to pay tribute to, to women, and, which is the home focus of the whole month, so. So I think it would be worth that if we were considering, if somebody wrote a grant that they wanted to do this, I would imagine we would, you know, very, pretty likely-
Oh, unless it's a big year.
Would, yeah.
This is what we need to hear. You know, the other thing I can suggest when you talk about publicity is I would be happy to hang a banner on the front of my building for it, like maybe at the beginning of March, you know, as big as you want across the, I've got all that open space on the top.
Maybe I could put some banners or something in the trustee's office. My office is in that building, so I could put something there.
Are you thinking vinyl banner?
Mm-hmm.
Like just a- Because, you know, I have that fabric one that we purchased a couple years ago, the one that says International Women's Day, but it's cloth, and it's white.
I don't remember.
Eh, it's not great, but I mean, like they gave us, I still have it, it's, it's very nice. It's very indoor, because it's satiny and white.
Maybe we can design a banner that has Naomi Bowman on it and-
Right. Right, so I think a vinyl banner or two, if we get one up in the, in the corner here.
Yes, the corner would be excellent.
For the whole month.
Oh, yes.
Should I get my sister on it?
And the other thing that, and it's historically worked really well, is to get those yard signs to go in those planters on those corners. Everybody who drives by will see it. I mean, they were, I mean, they really worked for St. Stan's Farmer's Market. They had them up all around on 20, and it was like, they're not, they're not wildly expensive at all, and they're easy.
Don't buy the wires, I've got some. So, yeah, I have the wires if you need them.
Okay, so we're going to consider $400 for food, 200 for merchandising, and 200 for marketing. And do you want one motion for that, or?
I think we said the food would start at 500, because we just thought paper goods weren't included in the 400 and whatever.
And then I did know if you wanted me to skewer some of the, like have skewers for the charcuterie stuff so that it's easy, or, I don't know. But that's all stuff we can talk about.
And then space, are you thinking like at least $100 per event? I mean, for what, for, for events or?
I know, we place one a day, but I understand.
Yeah, sure.
Something, you can add something.
Do we need one, any more discussion?
No, we have a lot of discussion. You should just have somebody who- About the space.
It'll come in handy, absolutely.
Space.
It's amazing, yeah, yeah.
All right.
So, are you ready for a motion?
No, we aren't. We're still discussing.
We need to consider the venue, paying for the venue, for the nest.
Mm-hmm.
Do you give any? It'd be 100 per event, but that's not even covering, but you probably need to set it up.
No, it's nominal, you know, up to you.
So 100 per event, so we have four events going on.
Is that, is that enough? Seriously, we need your input.
It's so hard to, I haven't, I'm, I'm trying to work on that part of the gallery, and so I-
How much do you value?
Well, you have to think about your setup time. You probably have to have two chairs and tables, and you're-
Yeah, I do.
And so you're probably paying, I don't know, 20 an hour, or whatever, I don't know.
And that's a few hours before and after, after take them, yeah.
I know, it's a lot of- This is too hard for me, because I, I'm, this is like my goal for 2020 is to assess the value of the gallery.
Yeah, I think once you do it, it'll be easier than I do.
600?
That's 150 for it.
$600 for the venue? Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
600 for the venue. 500 for food and paper goods. And then we said, are we going to put the marketing in with that or not? 600 venue, 500 food and paper goods.
Yeah, we could do that, because in case we don't spend all of what we have in merchandising, you know, I have ideas for-
How much do you have for merchandising?
Things for the rest.
What were you going to use for that?
How much for merchandising?
I, I was thinking 200, but that might be too long.
I would say 300, just because-
100 for merchandise? You have buttons plus the marketing materials, right? And then we have to take into consideration that doing it locally just might raise the cost a little bit from what's, which is fine.
Which, which thing? Doing what?
Doing it locally might raise the cost a little bit, that it would be nominal, yeah, I'm sure.
Okay.
I'm very excited about the sashes.
So, fourteen hundred? So, are we, what are we adding together?
Fourteen hundred for that, and then that's the venue, the food, um, and paper goods, and merchandising.
And marketing.
Six hundred for, oh.
So, that's fourteen hundred, correct?
Yeah.
I, I look at buttons as marketing, that's.
Okay. So, the fourteen hundred, then, what about the, um, merchandise? Is that in, in that? Do you wanna just do this altogether and then do the entertainment?
Yes.
The artists, separate the two motions, what you had said. So, actually, isn't that, um?
So, should we just motion to approve the budget for?
Two hundred.
This is a budget.
Is it two hundred for, um, marketing and three hundred for merchandise? Five hundred for food and six hundred for venue, is that what we're?
Oh, no, that's, well, that's way more, we were putting three hundred as marketing and the buttons.
Oh, that's for all of it, for all of that, oh, okay, good, three, yeah, that's fourteen hundred. Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
I move that we, uh, budget not to exceed fourteen hundred dollars for food, paper goods, marketing, merchandise, and the venue for our March events.
I'll second, second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, thank you. And now for the, um, artists that will be performing.
So, I move that we reserve the option to pay for entertainment, a thousand dollars, in case our Main Street grant does not come through, so that we're all set and we can go ahead and, and book all these artists.
And, second, second. Any discussion? Okay.
I was just wondering, are all the artists selected already, or?
Yes.
A good.
They're on this page, if you look carefully, yeah, yeah, they're, they're here.
They're all invited.
Yeah, I do see some names.
Yeah, that comes to one thousand. I think, um, Dan's will be probably less than that, but we'll see.
I guess I, I'm so sorry, but we didn't, who's designing all this? Who's doing like the design? Is that a cost, or is that just someone will design? Per, for, for the banner and everything? Yeah. You know, looking for you first, I can.
I know someone that I would have to ask, because she does all our free work for us, but, um, you know, maybe, you know, I, I can talk to her, she would probably do it. I would love a picture, by the way, of Naomi Campbell, so if we, we need to get some graphics.
I have three pictures of her.
Yeah, so how will get, get, you know, the picture out there and everything? And so, yeah, I can work with that, I don't know if you guys wanna put that in the budget, but, uh, yeah.
I don't know, just, it was just a thought.
Yeah, no, she can do it pretty good, she does, she did our job last time, I remember.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, anyway.
Okay.
I volunteer my sister.
For free.
Okay.
She has given a lot to our community.
And we have a motion, and, did you second?
Yes.
Did you second, okay. Any discussion now, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Okay. Okay, well, good. That was a lot, actually, to get accomplished, and, um, thank you, Esther, for all you're doing on this, not only for figuring all this out, but also for knowing and contacting all the artists, all the performers.
My pleasure, it was so much fun last year, it's really.
It was, it was.
It was a really fun night. Yeah, yeah.
I was glad.
Okay. Thank you, and now I'll continue with the, what we have left, um, coming up this year for the commemoration of the centennial of the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment. And, um, what we have coming up is, along with the events in March that are every Sunday, um, that we've been, just been talking about, we also are the co-hosts for a speaker at Michigan City Public Library on Saturday, March twenty-first. The speaker is named Janine Drake. She's a professor of history at Indiana University in Bloomington, and she's going to talk about, I wrote, I wrote it down here, about Hoosiers, suffragists, and the diverse groups of working women that came together for voting rights. And that's actually because you'll find any, any woman you look at, almost any woman you look at in the suffrage movement was involved in another big social movement too. So, she's gonna talk about all the different, um, anti-lynching and labor movement and, you know, all kinds of things. So, that will be interesting, and, um, she, Robin Cohn at Michigan City Public Library wrote a grant and received the grant that covers the speaking fees for the speaker. And, uh, League of Women Voters is also a co-host, and they're furnishing refreshments for that afternoon. And then, um, and then I thought that we would furnish some handouts, like bookmarks or something, or, you know, just something really very inexpensive, very small, but something that people could take with them. And, and I think we could probably sell buttons there and things too, if we still have any. And, so, that's, um, one event, and then we have two others in March. One of them, and they're both at Barker Mansion, they had asked us if we would, uh, co-host two events with them. One of them is on, uh, Saturday, March seventh, they have their annual Wild Women and Wine event. And, uh, that is from six P.M. to nine P.M. They don't know yet what the, uh, tickets will be, but they usually, but they're pretty inexpensive usually. And we will share, um, proceeds with them, um, and we'll talk about, we'll have to give a little presentation about the Women's Commission, and I think we have to help set up and things, so.
I printed that on the back of our agenda, by the way.
Oh, okay.
I think you said that to me earlier, so.
Oh, yes, yeah. And then also, the following Thursday, March twelfth, Barker Mansion is holding a Women's History Tour, and they have a speaker too, who will give a presentation about, um, the history of feminism in America through the lens of Barker Mansion. So, um, that is from six P.M. to eight P.M. And again, we are co-hosting it, um, we all need to be there at all possible to help, um, we just have to help with everything there, so, and need to promote it. And I do know that tickets for that one are very reasonable, because the tickets are ten dollars, but they're only five dollars if you're a senior, so.
Five dollars for you?
We're not going to make a lot of, uh, money on this, but we will get half of the proceeds, so. And it'll be great, and they, and in fact, after Barker Mansion met with us, um, a few months ago, they decided that they would have an exhibit for the entire year of women in history for their, you know, for the whole year, so, yeah, so they're doing a lot, and, um, glad that they're, that they wanted to be, you know, wanted to participate like this, um, in, uh, in the suffrage, uh, history. So, let's see, so that's what we're doing in March.
And, and I know you've gone over this, but, uh, are all these events in the main room?
Yes.
Yeah, are they using the down?
I don't know, one of them is a tour, so.
Uh-huh, that will be, yeah.
Yeah, but the other two will be in the main, yeah, will be, um, in the main, the big rooms.
It's a lot, there are events in March, a lot.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just worried about.
Twenty-first?
The twenty-first, from one to three.
Yeah, thank you. We need to be marketing to a lot of different people to fill those events, because it's not, can't, won't be the same, right? So, I'm curious if we have a plan for a larger, like, Women's Commission letter or an email campaign that's gonna go out to everybody to get the word out? Or is there a press release that's gonna be?
That was out, yeah, we have to figure that out.
Well, what's nice about the Beechers, the Beecher has that backside that has all the events for like the next two weeks, which is super nice. You just like bless them, and you're like, oh, this sounds like fun.
Well, you know, I do have a media, uh, contact list, and instead of like burdening the secretary with that, I mean, if you would like to just do the media stuff, you know, Facebook, and then I'll give you the, I just have a list of contacts.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you keep sending them press releases and whatever, and we do kinda need a calendar of events, I think, you know, for March. Promote that, almost like a calendar sheet, really.
We may be able to put that on our, like, on our side of the website, where we just have a calendar.
We could, we can definitely do that.
Of course, I can share everything.
We should mention.
Yeah, it feels like we should do. So, I'm actually thinking, I should, I could probably make a page on our League of Women Voters website so that we can point to it, just to have about Naomi on there and about events in Michigan City, I don't know if that would be.
Do you advertise in high school? That'd be a great, that'd be a really great spot.
For the Women's History Twitter.
High school, um, their newspaper. Maybe, maybe both high schools, actually, both, um, Michigan City and Marquette.
Six J.P.M., though.
Like high school.
High school, yes. Yeah. Yeah, they have that. Yeah, is it possible to get into that? Does anyone have a connection?
In what, in the newspaper?
You know, they put, the high school puts out a newsletter.
Yeah, they have, they have a newspaper that's really good, yeah.
They do. Should we, do people have contacts there?
Betsy Cohn would be the one to contact, I know that it's free if your events are free.
These events are free. Well, not the Barker ones, but I'm saying the ones that were.
Yeah. Which would be great, because it goes out to parents, students.
And then it hit all the Democrats.
Which ones do you highlight, though? You know, um, since there are so many, is it all of them, or is it a specific task to call to high school versus?
Yeah, I kind of think we could, um, in my own mind, it's too, at the, everything at the Nest is in one group, and everything else is in another group, because I had, that's, so that's one way to separate it and get, because there's plenty to advertise about what's going on at the Nest every Sunday that month. And otherwise, it's, it's overload, it's gonna be overload for anybody. It, it is for us, so we know it would be for anybody else that, that reads it, so maybe we can. And then also, we were planning to have a poetry contest, which we were planning to announce it in March, and that's just, that's another thing added to that then, too.
I guess I misunderstood, I thought the poetry contest was with the Black History Month.
No, we're doing one.
No, because, no, because Human Rights Commission has, uh, has contests going on, so we don't wanna compete with this.
Good, no, I, I thought we would.
Well, in March, we can have a flyer maybe at our events, and people can just pick it up about the, you know, poetry contest. They can just pick up a piece of paper and just say, enter this, prizes, whatever.
The two sides of the postcard, that one is all Nest, and the other side is other Women's Commission events.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
That's good, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's very good, yeah.
Yeah, that library one sounds fabulous.
She's, yeah, she's a good speaker. Okay, well, then, what about, um, the poetry contest? We may as well talk about that right now, let's see, is that all we, or do we need to talk about marketing more than this?
No, but I'll probably reach out to you, since you guys are more connected to at least writing me a blurb about all the Nest events with the right names and stuff like that, that'd be helpful, and then, uh, if there's anything, yeah, I'll just, I'll email you for more specifics.
Or I'll let you pre-create it.
We have to craft a, a press release and then get some graphics, yeah.
And I have, I do have pictures of Naomi.
Cool.
And I can, yeah.
We should do a special mention of her.
Okay, um, for the poetry contest, it was going to be poster and essays, but we changed it to poetry as a way to, you know, to, to honor, um, Naomi. But, um, it's not a tribute to Naomi, I think with the committee that met about this a couple of weeks ago, I think what they suggested was, um, the poems would be titled, "What Would You March For"? Do you like, do you think about that?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, okay. And that would be, and these are the dates we had figured out, would, is that we would announce it around, um, March ninth. They'd be due April seventeenth, which is the Friday following the, um, spring break, the, the spring break for the public schools. They're on break until the tenth or something, and, um, so it would be, do the following week. And then the awards would be, um, the first week in May. We had talked about just having, um, ribbons or certificates for awards, and I don't think, I don't think we had decided on monetary awards. But also, I have written down from that, that it would be limited to third through sixth grade. So, what do you all think about that?
That's a hard.
The high schoolers?
The essays, yeah.
I can tell you about our poetry contest, we offered, we're in our fourth year sponsoring a poetry contest, K through twelve. And, yeah, well, yeah, that's what we do, and you almost wanna open it up as wide as you can, because you don't get very many submissions, because the teachers don't do units on this, and it's up to the children, and so, it's taken us four years to, to grow it, I mean, the first year we had, um, only a very small handful of poems, and now we have, you know, a very decent amount.
Two, your three through six is extensively testing, like two or three weeks' worth of.
That's right, and that's right, yeah, I don't know.
The older ones aren't testing as much.
And your poems from your kindergartners are so charming, I mean, I, I love, I love those, those little. And then you get really touching ones from the high schoolers.
The high schoolers are passionate.
Very passionate.
If we have a fundraising event later on in the year, we can ask them to read their poems.
It'd be like a spoken word type of thing.
Yeah.
That's why ours culminates in a performance.
And actually be invited into our meetings, and we always did that with Human Rights Commission, we always had the winners come in.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And they loved that, my students, a few of my students found those, those poster contests, and they loved being in the paper, and they loved it.
K to twelve, yeah.
Get more submissions.
And we thought we would limit it to students who either, um, attend school in Michigan City or live in the Michigan City area schools district. And, um, we would give flyers to English teachers, but we would also, um, contact, we would get something to, um, Betsy Cohn at the Michigan area, Michigan City Area Schools. And also, I had written down somewhere all the, all the schools that I could think of.
How about Abbey Lake for the?
Safe Harbor and Boys and Girls Club.
Safe Harbor, yeah.
And Boys and Girls Club.
Okay.
That would be a big push.
And all of the parochial schools, and I don't know if there's any kind of homeschool, um, group here that we could, but if we are.
I know there's a homeschool group that goes to the YMCA for their homeschool program.
Right.
Oh, okay, yeah.
If you advertise, the homeschoolers will come up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Especially in the Beecher, and those like things too.
Beecher and, um, like Facebook or Instagram, things like that.
Okay, and then we had thought, um, we'll find some retired teachers to judge the, to read them and judge them. And, let's see, but what about the, um, awards, prizes for this? Either anything, any monetary awards, or just, or, you know, or item, you know, computers or something? Or just, uh, ribbons or certificates? Um, or just ribbons or certificates? Well, I'm thinking what Human Rights Commission does, they give out, you know, they give laptops and things. But, yeah.
They never used to.
My gosh, you do that.
Oh, well, maybe that was only one year I read.
So we, we kept it, we kept it pretty simple, we really did. We found that the kids just wanted their photograph taken with the mayor. That was the big, that was the big thrill.
I think that's what we, the first year we did it, we had, we had big gifts for, um, the winners. And now it's, um, certificates and a professional performance in our gallery, we set it up. They have their microphone, little kids will do it, lots of, the paper comes out and takes their picture, so. And we have a very nice certificate that we give each of them as well.
That sounds good. Yeah.
Yeah.
What about gift cards or something? Something small, like if they can go to Dairy Queen or something.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause that would be easy, too, easy for us.
The local shops or something.
Cabos.
Yes. Something, yeah. A movie, a movie ticket or something, I mean, they'll like that.
Okay, maybe the older students, you know, maybe the high school, anyway, but.
Yeah.
Something like that. Okay, well, actually, this is a good, um, these, almost all the decisions are made. Ooh, does anyone have access to an entry form and parental release that has ever been used for?
I'll send you the ones, I'll send you, I'll send you, I'll send you one.
Okay, okay. Okay, and then, I think you had talked about getting, setting up an email address for the Women's Commission, a Gmail, I guess, something. Oh, we could, so that, we have those lists of emails supposedly, right, from our Equality Day?
Would the email have to go through the city?
Well, maybe it would, I don't know, that's a good question. I can ask, I will ask. So if you give a city email, that'd be.
I think it would be wonderful if we can get a city email address.
Women's Commission at, you know, E Michigan City.
That's up to the mayor.
Yeah, we can check with him.
That would be fantastic.
Our IT department.
That would be awesome.
Well, because they keep everything in one place, that'd be a bit more secure.
Yeah, and it's more official.
The IT department right now is going under a huge change, but actually, within a week or two, we will have somebody actually in-house, who, um, we're getting a new website and all of that.
I know, he's very excited.
Yeah, Caleb, I think, it's, it's gonna be a big change, and also, then, once he's in-house, we could maybe offer more as far as saying, he could promote activities, he could post things. We wanna get him in place first, and then, I've done more work, but I can ask about, uh, a Women's Commission email.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Well, that makes me think, like, even for all the events that we have for, for March, if there is, like, a mayor can talk about what we're, you know, all the separate just events would be.
Yeah, the press release out. Will, yeah, with all the information, so. Yeah, yeah.
So then, does that need to go through, this, who does the press, who, does that need a more formal?
Approval.
Approval?
I don't think so.
I never, never, never encountered that in other commissions.
I think, you know, maybe I just have to paraphrase, check it, you know, kinda like that, and that's it, yeah. Okay. Yeah, um, how would the poems be submitted? Would, would they, um?
That's, that is a problem, because you have to have a storage place. We always used, yeah, we always used, actually, the downstairs here. We'd have everything spread out, 'cause we'd get, you know, close to a thousand sometimes.
Posters too.
Yeah, that was posters. We just have them submitted electronically?
Yeah. That would be easier, it's, it's much easier.
So usually, the teacher is like a hundred percent behind it. Some schools actually have, they give it to their whole class, and then the teacher just mass ma, emails me the poetry.
And plus, you know, the students individually, and especially in the middle school, I think in middle school and high school, they have their tablets, so they have the Chromebooks, so they can.
The high schoolers send them to themselves, not through their teachers.
Yeah, they can do that, I think the middle, the middle schools have tablets now.
I think so, I think so.
Well, everyone's one-to-one, so.
Yeah, I think they do, because now they have e-learning, so they can submit that themselves.
Yeah, they do, the older get submitted directly, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, are you talking about the middle school level, with Chromebooks, too?
Yeah, I think so, because they have.
Because I have e-learning.
I don't know, I was just asking.
And the elementary kids have them, too.
They, they have, they have, um, yeah.
They don't always follow the directions on how to, 'cause we do a blind reading of it, you know? They have to submit their name.
Well, they can, you can, you can get it, no, you may get it twice, so you can be prepared to get it twice, because they can be submitted by the teacher and/or the student themselves. At least, at least you have, like, Killing Two Birds with a Poet's Song, at least you get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, oh, good, good.
It makes it easier, actually, to present it themselves.
Anything else then about the poetry contest? Okay, we got a lot, uh, decided today, this is really good. Okay, um, is there anything else that anyone, I think I, oh, I, oh, no. Let me just say this, there are some other events we're doing, but we don't have to deal with them right now. We're hoping to, I'm hoping everyone will want to be in the parade this summer, dressed as like a suffragists, perhaps, and, um, but the parade, um, you know, decisions haven't been made yet.
We're just starting, we have a meeting this week.
Yeah, so.
Working on it.
Yeah, so, um, we don't need to decide that now, we probably have to get past March before we can do anything, anyway. And then also, I would like to, I would like for us to, um, obtain a resolution from our city council and proclamation from the mayor in August, um, for Women's Equality Day. And that, I was thinking maybe even jointly with other, with other women's organizations that, that, um, are interested in that. And, let's see, so, those would be, oh, no. And then, Women's Equality Day, for the last several years, we've had a luncheon at Lubesnik Center for the Arts. We always have it a few days after, we never have had it on August twenty-sixth, which is the actual day that the Nineteenth Amendment was adopted. But, um, we, I think we need to decide at this point, even if we don't do anything right now, we need to decide whether we're going to have an event on the twenty-sixth of August, or if we want to, you know, have something later. If we have it a week later, Lubesnik will be available, but they're not available, um, even for us to use in August, so. And then, um, I think we need to decide if it would be a lunch again, which we've always had, or maybe this year, a dinner and a speaker, too, we'll have to decide on. Does anybody have opinions? Do you want to commit to anything now?
I like the idea of having it at Lubesnik Center, because they have the exhibit going on, and so.
They won't let us do it while the exhibit is on, because they've always had to close it for us. Actually, actually, maybe we could have it in the evening there.
Well, no, it's gonna be, it's gonna be open for nineteen weeks, starting July third, she said. So, I mean, the women exhibit that we help sponsor is gonna be up.
Oh, yeah, that's right, well, it fits nineteen weeks.
She said nineteen weeks, so for sure.
She did.
Nineteen weeks.
But, but you're right, they would, we've never been able to use it while the exhibit is up.
Well, yeah.
Because they, they're, and now that there's.
Before Labor Day, because of their attendance, that's why.
Just because.
It was a Labor Day thing, that was, you know, because they have people coming to the museum. So after Labor Day, they feel they're gonna have much less people coming to the museum, that's why they let us use it, so. But the exhibit will still be up, which is really nice, so.
Okay, um, so you want to, um, go with Lubesnik Center again? It is a lovely, lovely site, and especially with the, yeah, with the exhibit there. Do you want lunch or dinner? Do you wanna do something fancier? This is, uh, we've always had this, um, luncheon, it's just beautiful. It's free for, yeah, yeah, and we usually have between, I don't know, sixty and a hundred, so, people there. And, um, it's, and we have it catered by, you know, by somebody in town, somebody local. And, um, and then we always have a, a good speaker. So usually, something about women, so. So, um.
Man, it's, it's always very inspiring, I mean, I always like the speakers.
I agree.
Yeah, and it's a lovely event, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, and we do get a lot of attendance for a lunch, to them.
Yeah, yeah.
I just have to bring up, though, about the discrepancy getting worse through the years.
Oh, yeah.
And the fact that, you know, we've, we've never expected payment, it's always been free. But it is upsetting to me when we have so many people not show up.
Yeah, 'cause people will, RSVP, and thirty of them won't show up.
Yeah, so, and that's, that's a lot, and we, we've always, we've always given the food, it, it didn't go to waste, you know? Salvation Army or something, we, we got, we have the food out, but it's still upsetting to me.
So would a tea be better?
Pardon?
Versus actual lunch, would a tea be better?
Yeah.
That way, it's not as.
I know, yeah.
I mean, posing the question, so.
Yeah.
Well, we had talked about, like, doing some kind of cocktail fundraiser over there, right? As part of, um.
At Lubesnik?
Yeah, at one point, we talked about that.
That's, that's acceptable there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, wait a minute.
See the exhibit, we have a cocktail, we, we helped support that program, and we still have a great space, that's still a speaker.
And I'm also thinking, on the twenty-sixth, maybe we have just some kind of a meeting at the You Are Beautiful with candles or something, some kind of a little commemoration, kind of thing like that, outside and just, you know.
Women Voters is already planning a rally.
Okay.
Yes, but I don't.
I forgot what we have.
We are, I'm, I'm the head of this committee for the League, too. But, um, we're planning a rally, but we were hoping, yeah. We were actually thinking about Purdue Northwest, so it's in the center of the, um, county, so it covers La Porte, too, so.
And, and we've had rallies there before, it's fun.
Yeah. If we can't get that, then, um, then I, then I think we should consider, you know, right around here, somewhere around where we are right now. But I think we're looking at PMW first, so, the committee is. And, but there should be something on the twenty-sixth, definitely.
Okay.
And there, across the country, there are going to be events everywhere, um, on the twenty-sixth for.
So let's think about this evening fundraiser, with the cocktails and charging money, and maybe making some money back at this one point, because we have been giving it away.
And the, um, let's see, there are a lot of speakers available through the Indiana Historical Society. They have this state, um, suffrage, um, suffrage centennial, um, organization, anyway. And they have a speakers bureau, and that's where we got the speaker for the twenty-first of March. And those speakers are all around four hundred dollars, they're all excellent speakers. But, actually, we're having another one, another group in town that's having another speaker from that list. And so, maybe we don't need another speaker about the history. There was, actually, there was one who was going, who talks about the way that the suffrage movement was funded, and then the way that current women's rights organizations are funded. So that would kind of take us into the, I figure as of August twenty-sixth, then we start looking at the future, where I'm really looking at the past until then, but, um, so maybe we could try to find a speaker that would be something about women's rights in the future, or where we're going. Something like that, so. And I know that La Porte Library is having a speaker in October from that list, who's going to talk about fashions in, um, the suffrage movement, so that'd be interesting, too, so. Okay, well, does, it, does someone here want to, um, be in charge of planning the Women's Equality Day luncheon or dinner? Or is this just a group decision on everything, do you think?
I did it last year, I can't this year, I just can't, not with everything going out with the League. Yeah, and it's not difficult, it really is not.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah. Well, I think if, if we as a group make decisions about it, then it'll be easy for someone to do the things.
It's a lot right now, I think it's a little overwhelming right now.
Yes, I was getting to another thing at this moment.
We just have too much. I have a little switch right now.
Okay, well, then, I have something completely different right now, right now. We have a new commissioner here tonight, Veronica Martin, and, um, do you wanna introduce yourself? And then we'll go around this circle and introduce ourselves.
Sure.
To you.
Okay, so, I'm Veronica Martin, um, I've, I've been here in Michigan City for, since two thousand eight. The first person I've met was Mrs. Inquis. Within a lot of things that was talked about around this table, my children participated in and were recipients of.
Really, really talented kids.
Yes, um, all of which are in college right now. So I'm very proud of that. I also have a office out here, um, counseling office, and in, located inside the Michigan Council Trustee Office. So, um, that's called the Mindful Minds, so helping women and children.
I didn't know this, this is wonderful.
Yes, so helping women and children, um, families cope with, you know, depression and anxiety, especially during this time that we're, we're in with a lot of, a lot of hurt and a lot of pain that our young people are going through, so I'm, I'm here. And this is a place that, um, I think I came to visit it once, and I said, yeah, this is the place for me. So, here I am.
Good.
Okay, um, so, I don't know, what else do you wanna know?
Well, I'm thrilled to hear everything that's going on in her life, I've known her a long time.
A long time, and Mrs. Inquis has been a blessing to our family, but I didn't know anything, uh, she was, she was there.
My goodness, so I've been introduced to you.
Okay, the rest of us know you.
I'm Nicole, I'm also a mental health therapist.
Yes.
Yeah, I, my specialties are pregnancies and infants.
Oh, great.
And I like the early childhood, so. I have a little one, and I love Michigan City, so, welcome to Women's Commission.
Thank you.
And I'm Bonnie Schaff, also known as Bonita, you'll see that name around somewhere. And, um, I'm a retired, I'm very retired, but I'm a retired attorney, and I'm involved now in Legal Women Voters and the Women's Commission.
Great.
Ms. Dalia Gigas, I just stepped down from presidency of Women's Commission. I'm also the president of the Sustainability Commission, and on several water-related commissions, Trail Creek Watership Partnership, La Porte County Sewer and Water Board, SWAG, the Stormwater Advisory Group. So, water is one of my things, I'm an environmental person, I'm a retired chemistry teacher, and now getting to do volunteer work, and it fills my days.
And I'm not a commissioner, but my name is Esther, and I have an art gallery performance venue in Michigan City, and host a, co-host a radio show, weekly radio show on the arts.
That's good.
I'm Janet Butner, and just recently started working as one of our new mayor's administrators. And so, it's been a busy January, and, um, it's something totally different for me. And the last few years, I've been doing some writing and published a couple of books. And before that, I worked at Brown AccuCollege for fifteen years as a department chairperson. And before that, I worked at the hospital as an X-ray tech for fifteen years. So I've gone back to school a few, a few times along the way, so. But, um, I, I've gone to quite a few different commission and board meetings just to learn more about what's happening. just to learn more about what's happening beyond just our office. So I'm happy to be here tonight and learn about all these events coming up. And I agree, it is overwhelming, you have a lot coming up.
I'm Christina Isabel and I have a dance company, I'm a dance artist and have been out here in Michigan City now for four years. I also am on the board of the Triumph Art Institute and created a whole art and nature series out there. Just trying to get more live arts in this area.
That's good.
It's nice to meet everybody. Don't, don't, don't be so hard on me if I can't remember everybody's name by the next meeting.
But I will get it, is there a list, did you get the list of names of?
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then the last real thing on the agenda is, Dalia, you were going to talk about grant recipient follow-up?
Yes, so I need to make a annual report for last year. And I thought, wait a minute, and part of our grant requirements are, the groups are supposed to report back to us. And what I, what I crafted is a letter, and I had it printed, but I must have passed it out to someone because I don't have anyone, but it's all right. It's a letter that I gave to Shar. Charlene's gonna go to our list of people who got grants from us and just email them and ask them for, like, I want one to two sentences about the event and one or two photos. So then I can make a little presentation for the, you know, like about what, who got money and what they did. So like even the Y C, right. So she's about to get that organized. And then she says, well, I think we should have a spreadsheet on all our grants that we gave out, which is a super good idea, that's what Shar came up with. So that's kind of what we have been just kind of talking about, you know, just recently. Because I think if everyone just gives a report and that's required, really, a little report, and I just want two sentences, like, here's what happened, it was a success, we used our money for whatever, and then a couple of pictures, that would be great. So that's what I'm working on, trying to get the contact information, and she's working on that as well. And yeah, I've got to make some kind of an annual report for hopefully March sometime for the city council, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's good. Thank you, Dalia, that's great to follow up on that. Because we've kind of let that go through the years, so. Okay, are there any public comments from anyone here?
Yes, I have one.
Yes.
Okay, I do want to invite everybody to attend the next city council meeting. As you know, the League of Women Voters is celebrating its 100th birthday. It's actually on Valentine's Day. And so on the 4th, it's the first Tuesday of the month, there will be a proclamation. And it's, the person that will be reading it will be Angie, Angie Nelson Dyche. Got all the names in. But there have been other people supporting the proclamation, including our former liaison, maybe former, he's not here tonight, but he also has supported that. So please come out that night, I know the League people will. And as much as they can, I know they're usually there anyway, obviously. And then there will be, I'm sorry, yes, that's the resolution, excuse me. That's the resolution. The proclamation comes from the mayor, I think he's also appearing there that night.
He usually is.
That's really up to him how he wants to proclaim it. But we're very excited about it. And I do need to point out again, because I'm really proud of that, that we came before the 19th Amendment in preparation for the 19th Amendment. We came before because we wanted not only for the women to be prepared to vote, but to help educate everybody to be able to vote. So please come out and celebrate with us. We're also having a luncheon on Tuesday, what's the date, do I have it?
The 11th.
The 11th, yes, you're welcome to join it. The guest speaker will be a wonderful ranger from the National Park. Linda, Linda Lancaster was also a member of the League. And she'll have, she'll be able to tell us about entities all across the United States in the National Park Service that were formed, really, because of women and really attributed to that. But anyway, it should be a fun time, we'll also be celebrating. So there'll be cake and some festivities. And that's at Patrick's at 12 o'clock.
Thank you, Joanne. Does anyone else have any comments they wish to make? Okay, well, thank you all for being here tonight and the meeting is adjourned.